Praise the Lord. Good to see everybody here. My heart's so happy. It only took us about five years. We're Message Church, and this next song is our doctrine. On a hill far away stood an old rugged cross. Let's all stand to the King, the emblem of suffering and shame. And I love that old cross. We're the dearest and best for a world of loss. Sinner was slain, so I'll cherish the old rugged cross. Till my trophies at last I lay down. Amen. I will cling to the old rugged cross and exchange it someday for a crown. Here's the second part of the ministry. Oh, that old rugged cross, so despised by the world, not the bride though, has a wondrous attraction for me. For the dear Lamb of God, who reappears above to bear it to Calvary. So I'll cherish the old rugged cross. Till my trophies at last I lay down. I will cling to the old rugged cross and exchange it someday for a crown. Amen. Let's all pray. Father, we bow to you this day, Lord. We're so thankful that it has finally gotten here, Lord. The prayers have been prayed, Lord, the meditation, Lord, the concern and the action, Lord God, the excitement, Father, it's here. And Lord, we are so appreciative. For where two or three are gathered in your name, Lord, you'd be in the midst of them. Lord, we know you're here. Father, it's a precious cross to us. It's a precious word, Lord, to us. And Lord, we're grateful to be gathered together, Lord, to celebrate the resurrection, to celebrate, Lord, the great communion, Lord, of the saints, Lord, this great covenant promised by you, Lord, that you'll never leave us nor forsake us, Lord. We're counting on that today, Lord. We pray you'd bless us now, Lord, as we worship, receive our worship, Lord God. And Lord, I pray, along with a believing assembly, for those not as fortunate as us, Lord, those in other countries were to even bear your name, Lord, would be a great reproach and danger. Father, we pray for each one of them, Lord, that they get to hear the word, get to sing the songs, Lord, get to just express, Lord, the hope for tomorrow that's in them, Lord. Give that to them, Lord, as you've given it to us. We thank you, Lord, to be able to worship freely. And Lord, we bring you our mistakes, we bring you our troubles, Lord, our infirmities. We laid a cross, Lord, your body. Father, and we know at Calvary, Lord, you paid the price that we could walk free, Lord, and you would heal us, and you'd deliver us, Lord, and answer our questions. So we rejoice this day, Lord, as that you bless us now, in Jesus' name. Amen. You can be seated, God bless you. David, come on up, sing "Us Happy." It's my son David, I'm proud of him. I'm grateful for his efforts and all the efforts of everybody and all the miles down the road. I'm thankful for vehicles, aren't you? Someone once told me this, "You're going to wear an awful lot of vehicles doing all that traveling." Yeah, but there's a reason why we are. Amen.
Praise the Lord. It's an honor and a privilege to be here. Took a while, but we're all here. I just preached a sermon on worry versus excitement, and that Job, in the middle of all of his worry, he could have been excited instead, and he would have been right. And I want to say through COVID, through losing some of our dear brothers and sisters, through every hardship, if we would have took every worry we had and instead been excited, we would have been right. Because I'm excited about what God's doing, what he has done, and what he will do. Amen. Amen. Let's sing that song, "We're Together Again," just praising the Lord. Let's go to F. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. Something good is going to happen, something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again, in one accord. We're together again, just praising the Lord. We're together again in one accord. Something good is going to happen. Something good is in store. We're together again, just praising the Lord. I am thinking of a rapture in our blessing home on high when the redeemed are gathering in. How we'll raise the heavenly anthem in that city in the sky when the redeemed are gathering in. Oh, when the redeemed are gathering in. Washed like snow and free from all sin. How we'll shout and how we'll sing when the redeemed are gathering in. There will be a great procession over on the streets of gold when the redeemed are gathering in. Oh, what music, oh, what singing, oh, the city will be roar when the redeemed are gathering in. When the redeemed are gathering in. Washed like snow and free from all sin. How we'll shout and how we'll sing when the redeemed are gathering in. Saints will sing redemption story with their voices clear and strong when the redeemed are gathering in. Then the angels all will listen, for they cannot join that song when the redeemed are gathering in. Oh, when the redeemed are gathering in. Oh, washed like snow and free from all sin. How we'll shout and how we'll sing when the redeemed are gathering in. Saints will sing redemption story with their voices clear and strong when the redeemed are gathering in. Then the angels all will listen, for they cannot join that song when the redeemed are gathering in. When the redeemed are gathering in. Washed like snow and free from all sin. How we'll shout and how we'll sing when the redeemed are gathering in. Oh, then our Savior, he'll give orders to prepare the banquet board when the redeemed are gathering in. And we'll hear his invitation, "Come, ye blessed of the Lord", when the redeemed are gathering in. When the redeemed gathering in, washed like snow. How we'll sing when the redeemed are gathering in. No more music. Oh, when the redeemed are gathering in. Oh, washed like snow and free from all sin. Oh, I will shout and I will sing when the redeemed are gathering in. Praise the Lord. You can be seated for a minute. Got a special. Ruth. Good to be here in the house of the Lord again. And I'm grateful for all the ones that aren't here. Whoever had someone witness to you and then you came to the Lord. They're here in spirit. Amen. And you are the proof that they are part of this meeting. Amen. Who's fed you when you were hungry? When you were hitchhiking, who picked you up? Way years ago, I was going down some dangerous road and some hippies picked me up. And they said, "Oh, my." They says, "You need us to pick you up. You're in a terrible place." And they handed me a $10 bill. And I looked at them and they says, "Well, praise the Lord, brother." And I was a Catholic kid, didn't know what that meant, but I thought, "Well, thank you." And I looked. I do today. They're part of the reason why I'm here. Amen. I'm here because others loved me. Others were patient with me. What is the message? It is the demonstration of the life of Jesus Christ in individuals. Amen. And it's manifesting itself. Amen. And I don't look up the book to see what I should do. Now it's pouring out of my heart. Amen. It's pouring out of our hearts and we're enjoying it. Amen. Ruth, you ready?
This song has been such a comfort to me and encouragement. And all of us together just reminds me of how he will keep us even through all these years. I will keep you in your times of trouble. I will keep you in your times of need. I will keep you for I'm your refuge. I will keep you for you're a part of me. I will keep you for you're a part of me. Temptations great, but the Lord has given us faith to overcome the battles won. Depends on how you see yourself from day to day. Full of guilt, condemnation and shame. But God doesn't see you that way. You just have to confess to him. He'll never leave you, but he'll stay with you all the way. No, no, he'll never leave you, but he'll stay with you all the way. For I will keep you in your times of trouble. I will keep you in your times of need. I will keep you for I'm your refuge. I will keep you for you're a part of me. I will keep you for you're a part of me. Keep your eyes on the prize, refuse to compromise. You, Esther and Daniels, for this final ride. Rise up, come be the word that peace bestowed on you. And just forget all what you're going through. For you just do his work and he'll do yours. We're fighting a battle, fighting for a cause to get all the souls that we have to find. For God's determined, not one hoof will be left behind. For God is determined, not one hoof will be left behind. I will keep you in your times of trouble. I will keep you in your times of need. I will keep you for I'm your refuge. I will keep you for you're a part of me. I will keep you for you're a part of me. I will keep you in your times of trouble. I will keep you in your times of need. I will keep you for I'm your refuge. I will keep you for you're a part of me. I will keep you for you're a part of me.
Well, praise the Lord. It's a very neat thing to watch your little sister grow up and sing. It's really neat. There's a song I sing called "Satan is Over, Devil We're Through". And I usually sing it, "Satan is over, devil we're through", but I wrote a third verse. I went through it earlier. I have not written it down, but you just bear with me because I want to put in there too, that sometimes I'm the problem and the greatest enemy, it's me. And I just have to die daily and crucify my flesh. And then I'll get somewhere. Amen. As much as I'd love to blame the devil for all my problems, sometimes the problem is me. And isn't that, that's not bad news, though. That's great news. If I'm the problem, I'm the solution. Amen. We've been made more than conquerors. You can call me crazy. You can say I'm a fool. I'm not saying it's easy. Sometimes it seems so cruel. But I remember where I came from and what you put me through. And I'm saying it's over. Devil, I'm saying we're through. You've had your chance to make something all out of my life. And you've turned me to shambles. Made a wreck out of me. But now I'm giving to Jesus the time of my life. And I'm saying it's over. Devil, I'm saying we're through. Now you may be feeling so, so blue. And you may not be knowing just exactly what to do. Won't you turn to my Jesus? And he'll make you brand new. When you tell him it's over. Tell the devil we're through. You've had your chance to make something all out of my life. And you've turned me to shambles. Made a wreck out of me. But now I'm giving to Jesus the time of my life. And I'm saying it's over. Tell on Satan, we're through. Now you may be thinking that I think Satan's my greatest enemy. But I think the Lord, Brother Branham, said that it was me. And if I just look in the mirror and die daily. Oh, through the power of the Holy Spirit, I can overcome and say, "David, we're through." I've had my chance to make something all out of my life. I've allowed my flesh to turn my life into shambles. I've made a wreck out of me. But now I've decided to give Jesus the time of my life. And every day I say to myself, "It's over." Can you say amen? Brother McCann wanted to be here real bad today, but he's taking care of his wife at the hospital. Wanted his son to come up, though. Come on up and greet the people, brother. It's been too long in between meetings. Brother Wade and I had talked a while back and we decided we need to put some action to our words. And that's all part of it. Glad to have my brother up. Young Brother McCann.
Lord, really, God. What a great opportunity. Walk through life journey. If you have other opportunities to go through. Where did you, how did you get there? What got you there? Where'd you come from? Where are you going? I thank God for the opportunity to be standing here representing the spoken word of God. In Cleveland, Tennessee, I stand in the gap of not only my dad In Cleveland, Tennessee, I stand in the gap of not only my daddy, but my pastor of the spoken word tabernacle. I pray for you and you do the same for us. Remember my mom, she says she's healed. She just wants strength. Pray for strength. May God bless you. Thank you. Representing the spoken word of God.
Amen. Oh, let's see. Brother Tony, are you ready? Tony's always ready. One time when my wife was having a roof and it was getting pretty rough in the hospital, my phone rang. I didn't know how I left that ringer on. And Brother Tony didn't know anything about that. He said, Brother Tommy, so I felt, let's call you. He said, the Lord told me to tell you, it's all gonna be okay. Told my wife, it's all gonna be okay. It's okay. She's okay. Brother Tony, come on up. This is my brother. You could tell us apart because I'm a little taller.
Do you love Jesus? I love him with all my heart. And I'm really excited to be here again. I remember the old days and we used to come here a lot. Back and forth every other month. We'd go different places. All of a sudden the COVID came and kind of spread everybody. But we are back again. Amen. I love Jesus and I'm always looking to the promise and their destination is the most important thing. Always the storm is raging. We all see it. If you are not standing on something, you're gonna fall. That's where we have come, the bride, you know. But we believe that his word is everything. For he himself is the rock. So once you're standing on it, there is no way. It doesn't matter the storm. You look at the destination, you look at the promise, you can fail. You can fail. It's impossible to fail. So there's a lot of things I want to just share with you. I have musicians. I have Brother Colley who come and Brother Colley will be able to sing something. And I didn't see your instruments. He's singing, you're okay. And then I have my girls too. I'm really blessed to be part of you today. We had our own and just, I didn't want to just say anything about it, but just, you know. I know you guys have the other different stuff, so you couldn't come, but we had a wonderful time also in the Lord. I pray that this service would be a blessing. God bless you. Brother Colley, if you want to come for us.
I love it. I love this one. God bless you all.
God bless.
Amen. There is no mountain
Thank you. They got a lot of gadgets this time, huh? Yeah. Man, huh, you are blessed already. Except you don't know it. I'm not coming to bless you. If I say it, I'm only trying to conscientize you. But you're already blessed. God bless you. Amen. Today I went back to the place where I used to go. Today I saw the same amount of cloud I knew before. When they asked me, what has happened? And I tried to tell them. Thanks to Calvary, I don't come here anymore. Thanks to Calvary, I am not the man I used to be. Thanks to Calvary, things are different now before. All the tears run down my face, but I try to tell them. Oh, thanks to Calvary, I don't come here anymore. I love this one. Today we went back to the house where we used to live. My little boy running here behind the door. But I say, son, have no fear because you've got a brand new daddy now. Oh, thanks to Calvary, we don't leave here anymore. Oh, thanks to Calvary, I am not the man I used to be. Thanks to Calvary, things are different than before. All the tears run down my face, but I try to tell them. Thanks to Calvary, I don't come here anymore. God can do it. Amen. You don't have one problem, but the devil will tell you always you have a problem. Always. So you should know his tricks. You should know that. Yeah. That's why Jesus came to tell you you don't have a problem. Jesus can go with you to any place, amen, that he want. And the devil has nothing to say. Amen. I've been on the mountain and the valley's all low. When he said I'd never have a place to go, then I trust in Jesus, his love divine. There is no mountain that we can climb. There is no mountain that we can climb. When I say we, I mean Jesus and I. If you've got Jesus and I. There is no mountain we can climb. I was in despair, troubled beside me. Did I feel my life I could not save? Then I trust in Jesus, his love divine. Oh, there is no mountain that we can climb. There is no mountain that we can climb. When I say we, I mean Jesus. If you've got Jesus and I. There is no mountain that we can climb. Jesus never fails. Jesus never fails. Heaven and earth will pass away, but Jesus never failed. Jesus never fails. Jesus never fails. Heaven and earth will pass away, but Jesus never failed. Your father will let you down. Your mother will let you down. Heaven and earth will pass away, but Jesus never failed. Your sister will let you down. Your brother will let you down. Heaven and earth will pass away, but Jesus never failed.
Jesus would never fail.
Your sister will let you down. Your brother will let you down. Heaven and earth will pass away, but Jesus never failed.
Mary Faith, come please.
There will be mountains that I will have to climb. And there will be battles that I will have to fight. But victory or defeat, it's up to me to decide. How can I expect to win if I never try? I just can't give up now. I've come too far from where I started from. Nobody told me the road would be easy. And I don't believe he's brought me this far to leave me. Never said there wouldn't be trials. He never said I wouldn't fall. He never said that everything would go the way I want it to go. But when my back is against the wall and I feel hope is gone, I'll just lift my head up to the sky and say, help me to be strong. I just can't give up now. I've come too far from where I started from. Nobody told me the road would be easy. And I don't believe he's brought me this far to leave me. Oh, no, you didn't bring me out here to leave me lonely. Even when I can't see clearly, I know that you with me, so I can't. I just can't give up now. I've come too far from where I started from. Nobody said it would be easy. Nobody told me the road would be easy. And I don't believe he's brought me this far to leave me. Nobody told me the road would be easy. And I don't believe he's brought me this far to leave me. Nobody told me the road would be easy. And I don't believe he's brought me this far to leave me. Would be easy. And I don't believe he's brought me this far to leave me. Nobody told me the road would be easy. And I don't believe he's brought me this far.
If you can translate, I would speak French. Can you translate? No, no, no. God bless you, sons. It's good to be here in the house of the Lord. And like you said, I'm Brother Valentine. I'm coming from Ivory Coast, West Africa. So we just want to say that we have to continue to contend for the faith that has been restored by Malachi for. The Lord bless you. Shalom.
Amen. All right. Well, we're gonna take up our offering. I want Josh and Dominique to come back for this, please. So when we do this offering, have two baskets. And offerings, love offerings. What you do is when you get it, you pass it to your side, then the person behind you. Go back and forth with each row. So you push it all the way through, hand it to the person behind you. They do the same. And Dominique and Josh are just there to make sure it all happens. Praise the Lord. I'm gonna have a word of prayer for Brother Eddie Biskel's family, for the family of Brother Charlie Kirk, and all the other unspoken prayer requests on everybody's heart. God knows every need. Let's just bow our heads real fast. Dear gracious Lord, we thank you, Lord, for bringing us here safely. We thank you, Lord, that through every trial, every COVID, every disappointment, everything else, you're still God alone. And even through the worst of times here, even if someone just passes away, they have a great place waiting for them in heaven. Lord, please bless these tithes and offerings. Use them for your glory and honor. Be with Sister Erica Kirk and the family. And be with Brother Eddie Biskel's family there, Lord. Be with everyone and every heart. You know every need. We may not know the end from the beginning, but you do, Lord, because the safest place for Christians in Christ. Bless these tithes and offerings. And Lord, here, prepare our hearts for the speaker, be with Brother Luke tonight. In the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen. Amen. Lord, please bless these tithes and offerings. Use them for your glory and honor. Be with Sister Erica Kirk and the family. And be with Brother Eddie Biskel's family there, Lord. Be with everyone and every heart. You know every need. We may not know the end from the beginning, but you do there. Well, praise the Lord. I want to say something because I know that young people are wondering, what do we do with our life? What does the world have to offer? And I want to say as someone that has worked all over for different Fortune 500 companies, led stores to national finishes and done work trips to Arizona and Boston. Living for Jesus Christ is the best thing you can do with your life. Living for Jesus Christ is the best thing I've ever done. Done a lot of things and this is the best possible thing I can think of. It gives me the best fulfillment. It is better than making all the money. It is better than being with anyone else. It is better than working for the top companies. It is the greatest thing you can do with your life. Believe me, your pastor and your people are not here because they, oh, man, I really, I really wanted to do is travel the world and get a big career. But Brother Samuel Day, he sacrificed what he really wanted. No. This is what they really want. This is the best life you can live. And if you don't think that, you're not really in Christ because you don't know this is the best joy. It's the best fulfillment. It's the reason I say. It's the reason I sing. And I know, I'm a little crazy when I sing. Because it's not for you, it's for him. You're not the audience. We're just God's people singing to Jesus Christ with everything that we are. You have an everything, I have an everything, and I give it to him because he literally created himself in a way where he could go from eternal to one of us so that he could give his everything for us. So yeah, I'll sing with some intensity because I want to give God everything that I am with every moment, amen. The world's giving their everything to their nonsense. Why wouldn't I give my everything to God? Amen? Amen. That wasn't on the notes, so that was free. Praise the Lord. Let's sing "Keep On The Firing Line." I guess before we have Dad come up with the next pastor and all that. You guys know that song? "Keep On The Firing Line"? I know you do because you're still here. You have been keeping on the firing line. These are not just songs to, God's not there thinking, "Hey, remind me of my word and I'll do it." No, this is to remind us of what he's already doing and to tell you to fight, be brave against all evil. Amen? If you're in the battle for the Lord and right, keep on the firing line. If you win, my brother, surely you must fight. Keep on the firing line. There are many dangers that we all must face. If we die still fighting, it is no disgrace. Coward in the service will not find a place. So keep on the firing line. You must fight, be brave against all evil. Never run nor even lag behind. If you would win for God and the right, just keep on the firing line. God will only use the soldier he can trust. Keep on the firing line. If you wear a crown, then bear the cross. You must keep on the firing line. Life is but to labor for the master, dear. Help to bend. Great shall be reward for your service here. So keep on the firing line. Evil never run nor even lag behind. If you would win for God and the right, just keep on the firing line. When we get to heaven, whether we'll be glad. Keep on the firing line. How we'll praise the Savior for the call we had. Keep on firing line. When we see the souls he hath helped to win, leading them to Jesus from the paths of sin. With the shout of welcome, we will all march in. So keep on the firing line. You must fight, be brave against all evil. Never run nor even lag behind. If you would win for God and the right, just keep on the firing line. Oh, you must fight, be brave against all evil. Never run nor even lag behind. If you would win for God and the right, just keep on firing line. Against all evil, never run nor even lag behind. If you would win for God and the right, just keep on the firing line. Amen? Amen? Is there any other, any other brothers who are pastors here that I missed? Besides Brother Wade? We want you to come up and greet the people. There's many faces I don't recognize. Thank you all for coming. God bless you. And if you're part of local groups here, be the best local person you can be for your church. Wherever you come from, whether it be Georgia, Alabama, or even Tennessee, do the best you can for the Lord. Go back to your church and give your whole heart. Support it financially. Support it with your zeal for the Lord. Be a person that can build an atmosphere for your local church. That's what our hope is. That's what the message is. Amen? Good to be in the house of the Lord. Great songs, great worship. I'm just more than happy. And my heart does go to Sister McCann. I pray God gives her that strength. The only problem I see she has, too many birthday candles. But we've got a cure for that. Step from this dimension, walk right out into another dimension. I was an 18-year-old young lady one day. You know, when my wife come in crying when Brother Biskel died, I thought one of my kids had died or something. She just cried and said, "What is it? What Brother Biskel died?" I says, "Well, honey, he was like in his 90s." And she looked at me. I says, "You can't be 55 forever." You know, I see Sister Dale, and I think you held Ruth when she was just a little munchkin. I know Brother Tony did. Yeah? So time changes. Time is filled truly with swift transitions. Nod of earth unmove can stand. Build your hopes, build your hopes on Jesus Christ. Amen? That's a good place to stand. And I'd just, I'd be remiss not to mention Brother Samuel Dale. I was so nervous when I first moved here. And up he come, and he looked at me, and he got a good hold of me. And he, he just comforted me. And then he saw my suit. Next time he saw me, he had 15 suits. All fit me somehow. And I'm very grateful. He was, he is my great friend. Amen? And if he could speak back from that portal, he'd say, "Press the battle, brothers. Press the battle, sisters. Do everything you can do, amen." So Brother Wade, come on up. Meanwhile, during those years, I got to be friends with Brother Wade. And he made a good pastor, too.
God bless each and every one of you. Good to see each one of you here today. And greetings from the Spoken Word Church in Lula, Georgia. We've got a pretty good little group here today. So, and we're going to have a song here in a minute. But you know, I was telling the church the other day, Brother Tom, a lot of people in the message were kind of stunned when the Pope came out of the United States. Do y'all not believe a prophet? He told us in the 60s it would come out of the United States. Okay? And everybody's like, "We just got to start believing what our prophet said." Listen, we have had so many signs. But remember, a sign only tells you where to go and that you're on the right road. It's not the road to get you there. Okay? Remember, signs follow the believers. When we were coming up here today, it said Interstate 75 on a sign. That sign's still there. We continued on. Everybody with me? That sign's on a pole. It stays there to tell you, yes, you're on the right road. But the vehicle, I believe we have. The road, I believe we have. We can look at the signs along the way that says, "Okay, yeah, we're in the right place. We're at the right moment. We're going the right speed. Light speed now. But we're going the right speed." But you got to have, you got to know that you're on the right road and you're in the right vehicle. Because how many people pass that sign and never even pay any attention to it? But we need to take the signs and let them follow us. Amen? We know what a prophet told us. I rest my soul on it. That he was telling the truth. That he was not wrong. There's not another one coming. I told somebody not too long ago, they were talking about this, "Believe the sign garbage and how that Brother Brownham was not this." I said, "Well, let me tell you one thing. If Brother Brownham was not Malachi four, Brother Val, God's got to send me one before the great and dreadful day of the Lord because he promised me. Behold, I'll send you alive to the prophet." All right? So he's going to send him to me. He either has already sent him or he's going to. I believe he's already sent it. Amen? I do, too. I just believe that we're here. We're at the moment. And fellowship meetings, I know we took a few years off, but you know, it was, it was inbred in my dad. My dad and Brother Homer back in the early 90s, actually in the 80s, late 80s, started these fellowship meetings. And it's just ingrained in my, in my DNA to love fellowship meetings because we, we always, he always supported them and we always support them. So we sure appreciate all of you coming. And if the Lord tarries, the next one will be January the 17th at our church. January 17th at our church, it'll be the third Saturday in January. Brother Darrell Ward will be speaking for us. Churches in Lula, Georgia. 6467 Main Street. I work for the post office. 6467 Main Street, Lula, Georgia. Look up spokenwordchurch.com. It'll tell you all the information you need to know. So thank you, Brother Tom. I appreciate that. But we have a singer today. But God bless you. Thank you all for coming. Like I said, enjoy yourself. The reason we're not going to have one close to the holidays is just, well, you know how holidays are. So we're just going to have this one in September. Then we'll start fresh in January. And then we'll let the Lord lead us to the next one. And when to have it, maybe April or so. We need to try to get some more people. You've got one sitting back there that is only a few miles from me. So maybe we could get them involved in the fellowship meeting. But, but January 17th, 2026. I'd have never thought 2026 would have gotten here. But, but it's here. We're here. It's good to see you, Brother Val. Thank you for sending that message that you're going to be here. We met a couple of years ago at the camp up in Roof. So he's a good brother, got a wonderful smile, got a good attitude. We sure do appreciate him. And God bless you, Brother Ryan. And the family's going to sing a song. And yes, we have watched all these kids grow up. Every one of them. Oh, my word.
You call me out upon the waters that grade unknown, where feet may fail. And there I find you in the mystery. An ocean's deep, my faith will stand. And I will call upon your name and keep my eyes above the waves. When oceans rise, my soul will rest in your embrace. I am yours and you are mine. Your grace abounds in deepest waters. Your sovereign hand will be my guide. Where feet may fail and fear surrounds me, you've never failed and you won't start now. So I will call upon your name and keep my eyes above the waves. When oceans rise, my soul will rest in your embrace. For I am yours and you are mine. Spirit lead me where my trust is without borders. Let me walk upon the waters wherever you would call me. Take me deeper than my feet could ever wander. My faith will be made stronger in the presence of my Savior. Spirit lead me where my trust is without borders. Let me walk upon the waters wherever you would call me. Take me deeper than my feet could ever wander. My faith will be made stronger in the presence of my Savior. Spirit lead me where my trust is without borders. Let me walk upon the waters wherever you would call me. Take me deeper than my feet could ever wander. My faith will be made stronger in the presence of my Savior. I will call upon your name and keep my eyes above the waves. My soul will rest in your embrace. I am yours and you are mine.
Lot of talent in one little family. Sister, that was splendid. Amen? Raise your children up in the admonition and fear of the Lord, and you get that. Amen? I'm grateful for that. It reminds me of a little sister once who went to the Louisville Expo during an Easter meeting. And that little sister sang a song, "Those Aren't Nail Scars, That's My Name." And I saw literally hundreds and hundreds of people screaming and yelling coming to an altar. And that sister reminds me of that. And it was quite a blessing. So I encourage her and I encourage anybody with a gift, practice that gift. "Oh, but I'm not able to." Now you're starting to understand the gift. It's not you, it's him in you trying to put a work out. Amen? Well, what if I do it wrong? Then do your best doing it wrong. Amen? I love the little song I learned in a Catholic church, "The Little Drummer Boy." And one of those words, even as a Catholic, God was leading me and guiding me. The little drummer boy said, "I played my best for him." Let's just do our best for him. Amen? I'm very excited to have Brother Luke Gibson come up. Sister Pam. Oh, you know, that was on my mind, but my forgetter's getting, getting better. Sister Pam. The little drummer boy said, "I played my best for him." Let's just do our best for him, amen? I'm very excited to have Brother Luke Gibson come up. Sister Pam, oh, you know, that was on my mind, but my forgetter's getting, getting better.
Blessed assurance, Jesus is mine. He did my fourth man in the fire, time after time. The blood of His Spirit washed in His blood. And what He did for me, I'm glad it is more than enough. I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He will never fail. I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He will never fail. A perfect submission on His arrest. I know the Author of tomorrow has ordered my steps. This is my story, this is my song. Praising my risen King and Savior all the day long. I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He will never fail. I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He will never fail. I sought the Lord, and He heard, and He answered. I sought the Lord, and He heard, and He answered. I sought the Lord, and He heard, and He answered. That's why I trust Him, that's why I trust Him. I sought the Lord, and He heard, and He answered. I sought the Lord, and He heard, and He answered. I sought the Lord, and He heard, and He answered. That's why I trust Him, that's why I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He will never fail. I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He will never fail. I sought the Lord, and He heard, and He answered. I sought the Lord, and He heard, and He answered. I sought the Lord, and He heard, and He answered. That's why I trust Him, that's why I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He will never fail. I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He will never fail. I trust in God.
This is Lord. Just real good, we're just about ready for our main speaker. I just wanted to again mention Brother Ed Biskel, he's such a sweet man. I remember when I was just in the message, just serving God in a, in a further depth. And I was so excited to be at a special meeting, and at the end of the meeting, everybody's at this big table eating, and I wanted so bad just to get close enough I could hear them. And I remember kind of sneaking up, I was just in my early twenties, or late twenties, early thirties, and I thought, I need to sit by him, and a minister who was sitting by him saw that, and he looked at me, and he said, "Way to that end," and pointed right to me. But he didn't realize that Brother David Morrison, Brother Ed Biskel, saw that. And they pulled their chairs to sideways, and grabbed another chair and put it in between them, and said, "You, sit there." And I always thought, I always thought that was special, because I was me. I was predestinated to, to go further into this. I remember my daughter Anna too, when she was a lot younger, and she's not here today because she's doing the message. What is the message? It's not just church, it's a life. Her and her husband are going interpreting for a wedding, so that Spanish people can understand what the minister's saying, and playing music, and so I'm very proud of her, thrilled my sister come up, and is playing piano, such a delightful musician. But anyway, Anna, when she was young, she said, "Daddy, I believe in God. I, I believe this message, I, I believe, but I don't know if I've ever really heard from him, he's never spoke my name." And we went to a special meeting, and there's Brother Ed Biskel preaching away about, I don't know what it was, and all of a sudden, he stopped. He looked out. He said, "Anna, there, I call you by name." And he went on preaching. Well, that didn't mean much to a whole lot of people, but to Anna, it sure did. My daughter Anna's still serving God, and God's still alive. The grave's empty, the tomb's empty. I don't have to yield to depression, I don't have to yield to doubt. I'm a believer in the gospel of Jesus Christ, amen? And if you're wondering what's right or what's wrong, first get the Holy Ghost, so you can at least judge. Because then it won't be you judging, it'll be Him. He'll judge His own word, just the perfect way that God, that it's intended to. Get the Holy Ghost first. Amen? I'm not gonna listen to people that turn it away, and within two days, are back to pornography, wearing clothes that are indecent, and cursing and cussing. Why would I believe them? Even a worldly court says this, this witness is not credible. And plus, all the accusations coming out, um, if I'm reading my Bible right, I think they're supposed to have two or three witnesses. Judging things that happened before they were born? Think about it, my friends. That's why it's a personal relationship between you and our King, amen? And you serve Him with all your heart. Because that's what the message is. Serving God with all your heart. John prepared a way for some people that were so zealous for God, that when John said, "Behold, the Lamb", they said, "Thank you, John," and went right to the Lamb, amen? And John said, "I must decrease, that He increases." May our lives decrease, so that His life increases, amen? You know, it was on my heart to have Brother Luke come and preach, and I just appreciate him. We've watched him for years and years. Let's just sing Amazing Grace as we stand, and we'll invite Brother Luke Gibson out. We'll have a good time, and there's some sisters not here, and you know why? They're doing the message, they're preparing food. So that when we're done, we're gonna go over there to that little Methodist church, because they're doing their part. For very cheap price, we got a very beautiful banquet hall, blessed in the name of the Lord, amen? So let's sing to the Lord Jesus this afternoon, as we invite Brother Luke Gibson out. It was amazing grace. How sweet does sound that saved a wretch like me? I once was lost. Oh, but now I'm found. I was blind, but now I see. Brother Luke. Appreciate you, brother. Am I on, am I on? No. Oh, yes. Oh, how precious did that grace appear for the hour I first believed. Could we just lift our hands and say, "Praise God"? Praise God. Praise God. Praise God. Praise God. Oh, praise God. 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 Have me say, "Praise the Lord." Certainly a privilege to be here with you this afternoon. Appreciate Brother Tom, I met him many years ago. I believe it was in Kentucky where I first met Brother Tom, and certainly appreciate him, and appreciate the privilege of being here with you. Did I hear somebody say, "A McCann from Cleveland"? Would you be any kin to John McCann, preacher man McCann? My, I was fifty-five now, but I was a seven-year-old boy. This is, most people don't know this, but this is a lot of my stomping ground here. He's preaching Etowah, Athens, Cleveland, Telkopolines, and I remember one eighteen-year-old boy I got to introduce to the message, and I went up in Athens, and I thought for sure all these Pentecostals are gonna love this, and I made one little comment one night, and it blew it away, and I preached on, if apples make us realize we're naked, we ought to start passing the apples again, and boy, it messed me all up in these areas. We thank God for this great message that He sent us in this day, and amen? So we wanna, if we could, just quickly go to our Bibles. I wanna read from three places real quick. Matthew chapter five. Amen, Matthew chapter five. I wanna read one verse from there. Then I wanna turn over to Matthew, or Hebrews chapter five. Is this my water here, Brother Tom? No. Alright. Amen, alright. Matthew chapter five, I wanna read verse forty-eight. Jesus said, "Be therefore perfect," everybody say, "perfect." "Even as your Father, which is in heaven, is perfect." Now turn with me, if you would, to Hebrews chapter five. I wanna begin with verse, chapter five, verse eight. Though he were a son, yet he learned obedience by the things which he suffered. Listen closely. And being made perfect, he became the author of eternal salvation unto all them that obey him, called of God, and high priest after the order of Melchizedek. One other place, Hebrews chapter ten. I wanna read verses twelve to verse fourteen, and then I'll let you be seated. Hebrews chapter ten, verse twelve. Paul said, "But this man, after he had offered one sacrifice for sins, forever sat down on the right hand of God, from henceforth expecting until his enemies be made as footstool." Now listen closely. For by one offering he hath perfected forever them that are sanctified. Let's bow our head just a moment. Father, what a great privilege it is here, Lord, to be here this afternoon. And Lord Jesus, I'm constantly reminded that your prophet said, "Any man can open the Bible." But Lord, it takes the Holy Ghost to make it live. Now Father, what you laid upon my heart today, Lord, I pray that the Holy Ghost would come. Lord, an anoint us to speak your word. Lord, open the hearts of the people, open the minds of the people, Lord, to receive the word, talk to us out of it, Father. Lord, we're just useless without you. We pray now that the Holy Spirit would come. Come in a special way, Lord. Take the word of God and speak it to every heart. May you meet every need that's represented among us, and we'll give you praise for all things in the wonderful name of Jesus Christ, and the church says, amen? God bless you, you may be seated. I wanna speak this afternoon, I told the brothers, I'll give you a title, and I'm just gonna call it three words. Imperfect, perfect, and perfected. And I think there's a common ground that all of us here this afternoon could come to agree upon, and that is, the God that we represent is perfect. The God that we know today is perfect. There's nothing, there's no imperfections in God. His word is perfect. And the reason that God is perfect and His word is perfect, because God and His word is the self-same thing. David said, "The law of the Lord is perfect," converting the soul. God is perfect, the law of the Lord is perfect, and His ways is just as perfect as he is. And he doesn't have to perfect himself, because he is the epitome of perfection. Now God being perfect requires that any man that fellowshiped with him, he too must be perfect. Because there is no imperfection that can come into God's presence. So something would have to be done in order for any individual to be able to walk into God's presence. And being perfect, that means that God is sinless. There's nothing inferior about God. So pure, so perfect, and this is what the prophet said, so pure, so perfect, and God is so holy, till the angels look dirty in his sight. Then he says, "What about you and I?" He says, "We do not want to try to enter into his presence with sin upon us. Therefore, knowing that each day troubles and things that beset us, that might not even be noticed in our own thinking, but when we come to think of a holy God, who even angels are dirty in his sight, then we know, Lord," listen, "that we have not even a chance." Now I wanna stop just right there for a minute, because perfect means entirely without fault and without defect. So I wanna borrow, just for a few minutes, the Apostle Paul's own words. Quoting from the Old Testament, he said, "It is written, 'There is none righteous, no, not one,'" referring not only to Jews, but referring to Gentiles. He said, "There is none that understandeth, and there is none that seeketh after God." Then he makes this statement, a few verses later. "For all have sinned and come short of the glory of God." Now that's the reason I start out with imperfection, and I'm gonna just say a few things to you, because when we come into this world, every one of us come into the world, when we come out of our mother's womb, we come out imperfect. Because every one of us is born in sin, shaven in iniquity, come into the world, speaking lies. So Brother Brandon says, "There's none of us perfect," we know that. He said, "Now God requires perfection, and no one could ever come into heaven outside of being perfect." Listen, you must be perfect. And yet the Scripture says, "None is perfect." So if we must be perfect in order to come to heaven, the Scripture says, "None is perfect", we all have sinned and come short of the glory of God, how are we ever going to enter into God's living place and dwelling place when He requires perfection? Jesus said, "I believe in the Scripture, there in the Sermon on Mount, be ye perfect as your Father, which is in heaven's perfect," think of the perfection that God requires of a person, a perfection. Now we're grateful, Brother Brandon says. He says, "Now I think that would be, if I would've been a little air..." He says, "Now I think that would be, if I would be in a little error in the Scripture, but yet I'm trying to earnestly stand for what we believe or what they believe. Each one of us, I certainly am willing to bear with those brethren, and I hope that you would bear with me and my errors." Listen, because there is none of us perfect. Now I just, I just want to begin with this. And I tell my wife sometime, I know it's hard to believe this, but I am not perfect. And I want to say today, none of us are perfect. David said, "When I was shapen in iniquity," listen now, "and in sin did my mother conceive me." Now when I tell people we're not perfect, now some people say, "Oh, I don't, I don't want to hear that." Well, wait a second. How in the world could God ever save a man that don't believe he's a sinner? You say, "Well, I was born in the message." It don't matter if he was born in the message or out of the message. Every person comes into the world the exact same way, and that is through a sexual birth. And brother, there is no hope for a man by the sexual birth. Every man that's born by sexual desire comes into the world as a sinner and has no capability of ever bringing himself into the presence of Almighty God. You say, "How could that be?" Listen, "In sin did my mother conceive me." I'm gonna say it the way the prophet says it. We all come into the world the wrong way. So in sin did my mother, you say, "Well, my mother and father both were righteous." It doesn't matter. Two righteous people, in order to bring you into the world, has to commit the act that caused the fall in the Garden of Eden, and that was the sexual act. And every man that comes into the world by sexual act, and there's nobody, nobody outside of two men that ever came in the world outside of the sexual act, and that was Adam, and that was Jesus. That's right. Jesus came in the world to bypass the original sin. Do you realize that the only Jesus have the ability to redeem us is because he did not come in the world the same way we came into the world? But every person that comes into the world, comes into the world by the sexual act. The sex act is the original sin in the Garden of Eden. So when you come in the world, a prophet of God would say this. You come in the world, there's a nature that's permitted by God, but it's not of God. Now look, folks, it don't matter. That nature, you, you can't make it better. You can't be good enough. You can't pray enough. And I'm just gonna bring it on down. You can't fast enough. You can't go to church enough. There's nothing you could do to make that nature any better. That nature has to die. That nature has no ability to ever enter into God's presence. Something has to happen to a man for him to be able to come into the presence of Almighty God. The original sin, listen. The original sin necessitates the virgin birth. And the virgin birth necessitates the new birth. That's the reason that Jesus, when he was here, he didn't never teach to the scribes in Pharisees, "Do good again, be better again." Jesus's first doctrine he ever taught is, "You must be born again." Because you have to be born the second time because the second birth corrects the first birth. That's when I hear people tell, "Well, so-and-so was born by so-and-so, and so-and-so come outside of this." And everybody goes back to try to justify themselves of how you came in the world. It don't matter how you came in this world. Every birth that come by sexual desire comes separated from God. The only thing that ever corrects that is not making the new birth better. It's not being religious. It's you must be born again. And that's what Jesus taught. Barely, barely, I said, "He except a man be born again." He cannot see the kingdom of God. Now that same writer, in one of his letters of the three, he made this statement. "If we say we have not sinned, we make him a liar." So brother, listen, when you say, "We never did in the first place," you can't say that until you've been born again. You don't come in and be born on a message pew and declare that if you've never met Christ. You say, "But I've lived, and I've never did this, and I never did this, and I don't want to get ahead of myself, but I've never did this, and I never cut my hair." And I, no, listen. You can live by every rule the church produces, but until you meet Christ. A few years ago, I'd like to tell this just for a minute. I know I gotta, on this fellowship meeting, Brother Homer's don't want to train me this way. You got thirty minutes and get out of there. But, yeah, but he's not here, that's right. But I was going to trip to South Africa. And I got six sons and one daughter, and my grandson, my oldest grandson's here with me this afternoon, Luke Gibson III. And my son Jeremiah was raised and never missed church, went to church all his life. There's one thing that my children have never asked me in my home. Daddy, we going to church tonight? That never had to be asked in my home. We always went to church. But just because you go to church don't mean you met Christ. So I was sitting at my office one day, and my wife came in there. And she says to me, "Luke, you ever thought about taking Jeremiah with you to South Africa?" I said, "Mama." I said, "That boy's a mama's boy." I said, "He ain't gonna go with me." I said, "Number one, I'm not ironing his clothes. I'm not making his water. I'm not taking care of him the way you do." She said, "I'll teach him to do all that." I said, "Well, go ask him." And she went back to ask him in his room. And I'll be honest, I was sitting there thinking of what's gonna cost me to take this boy. And I said, "Lord, I hope he don't want to go." She come back in, and she said, "He said he would go." I couldn't believe it, so I got on the internet, and I found him a ticket, and set him right beside me. We went over there. And I was preaching to the church, believe it or not, about the size of this right here the first night. In Port Elizabeth, South Africa. And Jeremiah was sitting in the back there with his brother in that checkered shirt was sitting. And I tell you, before I walked out there, Brother Tom, I got so nervous, what I wanted to preach just left me. And I tell you, my mind went blank, and I started shaking like this. Lord, I don't know what to do. And I could have pulled out any sermon, but it wasn't that. I knelt down, and I started praying. I said, "Lord, I don't know what's going on, but what I felt like I wanted to preach is not there." And all of a sudden, there was just something, not a voice, just something inside. Said, "Take your Bible, open to John five." I opened to John five, and I started reading where Jesus, you know, went down to the bull of Essa, you know, Sidom in there, when the angel come down stirred the water. The people had to get in when the angel stirred the water. I walked out there and preached that night on, "Whosoever will can come, but not whosoever." You can only come when God calls. And I started preaching that on how you could only come. God could be moving this place tonight, this morning, or this afternoon, and call one here, and never be a call over there. And you could come on your own merit, never do you one bit of good. But if the Holy Ghost is calling somebody, and they respond to that, something's bound to happen. While I was preaching that, my old boy got to crying. I mean, he got to weep, and I was like, "What in the world is going on?" I said, "Lord, you could have saved," in my mind, I was thinking, "He could have saved me twenty-four hundred dollars by saving him in South Carolina rather than South Africa." And I said, "If anybody here would like to receive Christ." And old Jeremiah's hand went up. I thought, "What in the world?" And brother, you know, I thought back about that. You know, my wife got that thought on her mind. You might have thought, "Well, that's just mama doing that." But sometimes we don't know when God's leading us to do things. That's why I tell these mothers, "Don't you ever gip up on your kids." But you say, "You don't know where my son is. You don't know how far my daughter's going." It makes no difference. Brother, God can reach them. I don't care where they at, where they been. There is nothing too hard for our God. And that boy received the Lord Jesus. We got back to the little apartment we were staying at, and I was knelt there, and I was praying. And I felt somebody come up behind me, and I turned around, and Jeremiah was sitting on the couch, and tears were just rolling out of his face. And I said, "Son, what's going on?" He said, "Daddy, I gave my heart to the Lord Jesus." I said, "Well, praise God." I said, "Jeremiah, when we get home, you know what to do." He said, "Daddy, get home. I gotta be baptized now." Brother, that's when I knew something was happening. I got on the phone, and I called up the pastor. I said, "Hey pastor, I can't explain this. I brought my boy with me. He's a preacher's son. He was raised in the house of God, but he got saved tonight." I said, "He wants to be baptized. He went down, filled the water up. I baptized him in South Africa in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. He's never been the same since." Brother, I tell you, it's different when God calls a man. I could lay all my, and I've told my boys this. I said, "If you don't have no convictions, you can borrow mine till you get your own." But the truth is, my convictions don't save them. Every one of them has to meet Christ for themselves. And I'll just say this, by the grace of God, every one of my children has met Christ. That ain't because of me, that's because of his grace. Can you say praise the Lord? We must be born again. But if we say, John said, "If we say we have not sinned, we make him a liar." Now how would I make God a liar by saying, "I haven't sinned?" Because he said, "All have sinned." Every single one. Now the word sin means, it's an interesting thought. It means to miss the mark. Now I want you, I want you to pay attention for a minute because in the, in the Greek, it's really interesting. Almost, not all, but almost every place that those Greek words are used like that, they either have a military con, uh, text, or they got a sporting context. I got to look at this one day, and here, here's, here's an example. 2 Corinthians chapter ten, verse five, he said, "Casting down imaginations, and every high thing that exalts itself against the knowledge of God, and bringing into captivity." That word is a military word, and it means to arrest that thought. But over in Caucins, he uses the word, "Let the peace of God rule in your heart." If you look up that word, it's not a military context. It's a sporting context. And the word "rule" actually means an umpire. Let the peace of God umpire in your life. If there's no peace, don't argue with it. If God gives you peace, don't argue with it. Just when you got that Holy Spirit in your life, and he's down in the control tower, and he tells you, "Don't do this, don't go there, don't listen to this, don't fuss with the umpire, just do what he tells you to do." So when we come to the word sin, Brother Badham used this word. When we come to the word sin, it literally means to miss the mark. The thought is, listen, not, 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 um, military, not sporting, but it has to do with hitting the target. And the idea is, but now Brother Badham used the thought of a gun because that's what he did. He shot guns. But when, when you look at it here, it literally means it's like an archery, taking an arrow and pulling it back to hit. Now you say, "Hit the target." Let me be more definitive. This word sin here, to miss the mark, doesn't mean not to hit the target. It means not to hit the bullseye. Let me say this to you. You may hit all around it. You may have good works in your life. There might be things when people look at you, can't lay a finger on you. But I'm telling you, there's not a man born by sexual desire that no matter how good he is, how many works he's got, there ain't no man that can hit the bullseye. It is impossible, it is impossible to be justified in the sight of God by the works of the flesh. Nobody can be perfect in the presence of God. That's why I start with telling you, we are imperfect. We come in the world imperfect. We come in the world the wrong way. We come by a sexual desire. Brother Badham says, "To miss," the word sin means to miss the mark. And I'm shooting at a target, driving attack at fifty yards, and I shoot. Take my gun, and I shoot, and I miss four or five inches. Brother Badham says, "What happened? My gun needs tuning up. There's something wrong. I cannot hit the target." See, so you realize, therefore, Paul says, "By the deed of the law shall no flesh, no flesh be justified, declared righteous in his sight. For by the law is the knowledge of sin." Gethsemane 3:16. Knowing that a man is not justified by the works of law, but by the faith of Jesus Christ, even as we believed in Jesus Christ, that we might be justified by the faith of Christ, not by the works of law, but by the works of law shall no flesh be justified. Listen, folks, I was raised, and I'm not down on any of it. I'm just telling you, I was raised a legalist. When I first come to this message, I didn't believe in wearing short sleeves. You would have never caught us in an old filthy ring like that. Certainly wouldn't wear a watch. We had all kind of human works. We had all kind of self-made righteous. But I'm telling you, in the sight of God, every bit of it was filthy rags. If you are trusting anything for your salvation outside the blood of Jesus Christ, we're lost. And this, this, this bothers missions people. Brother Badham said, "I don't care if it's Catholic, nepotist, Presbyterian, Baptist, Pentecostal, or even among us. If a man is trusting in the blood of Jesus Christ for his salvation, and he believes by faith, he is saved." Let me say it one more time, and I think you're in agreement with me. We are not perfect. I am not perfect. And you are not perfect. Had a man tell me one day, he said, "I'm looking for a perfect church." I said, "Well, when you find it, and you get there, it won't no longer be perfect." Now stay with me. I'm not perfect. You're not perfect. But he is perfect. Let me, let me be more definitive. This is what it says about Jesus. "For we have not a high priest, which cannot be touched with the feeling of our infirmities, but was in all points tempted like we are, yet without sin." I'm imperfect. He is perfect. Throughout his life, the Lord Jesus never missed the bullseye. He come in the world through the womb of a woman to fulfill the prophecy of Genesis three. He come through the woman, but he bypassed the sexual act. Human male instrumentality. He never came, he was not the son of Joseph. He was not the son of a Gentile. He was not the son of the Jew. He was the son of the living God. His life was prophesied all the way through the Old Testament. And when he came to the world, there wasn't one place in Jesus's life that he didn't do exactly and fulfill exactly what God spoke about him. He's perfect. Brother Badham says, "I've got a Lord Jesus who died for me." This is what he said. "I'm no good. I never was. I never will be. And you are not either." But Jesus Christ was God's perfect sacrifice. Do you realize the world examined him when he was here? They couldn't find fault. There was no defect in him. The leader of this world, three occasions. John 18:38, John 19:4 and 19:6. All three times said, "I find in him no fault at all." I'm not perfect. But he is perfect. Now just hold on. Brother Badham said, "When he died at Calvary, calling for mercy, he was called in man. He was, he was a man calling for help, but on Easter morning, when the seals of death in the grave broke, he rose. He proved he was God. Living, he loved me. Dying, he saved me. Buried, he carried my sins far away. Rising, justified freely forever. Some day, he's coming, oh glorious day." Every man or woman that's ever amounted to a hill of beans in this world has been men and women who's believed him to be deity. Someone said, one day accused him, said, you know, said, "You being a man," said, he said, "But what good work do you stone me?" They said, "For good work stone me not, but for blasphemy me, because thou, being a man, makes yourself God." But Jesus was not a man making himself God. He was God who made himself a man. He was perfect. He was Elohim, manifest in human flesh, walking among men. Even when they asking, Brother Badham said, "He was misunderstood." But they told him one day, "He spoke of the Father so much, show us the Father." And all of a sudden, he said, "Have I been so long with you? And you don't know me? When you have seen me, you have seen the Father. How sayest thou then, 'Show us the Father'?" He was the visible manifestation of the invisible God. There's no one that ever lived like him. Everything and everyone comes under him. No one before him or no one after him could take his place. All men before him looked to him, and all men after him desired to be like him. He came from the bosom of the Father and came to the bosom of a woman. He put on humanity that you and I might experience divinity. He became the son of man so that we could recognize we're the sons of God. In infancy, he startled a king. In infancy, He startled a king. In boyhood, He puzzled learned doctors. In manhood, He ruled the course of nature. He walked on the billows, He hushed the seas. He healed multitudes without medicine and never made no charge for services. He never wrote a book, yet all the libraries of the world couldn't hold the books that's written about Him. He never wrote a song, yet He's furnished the theme for more songs than all the songwriters together. Never practiced medicine, yet He healed more broken hearts than the doctors have healed broken bodies. Herod could not kill Him. Satan could not seduce Him. Death could not destroy Him. The grave could not hold Him. There's no one like Him. He's the perfect one. Let me say this, listen. I'm not perfect, He is perfect. But we are perfected. Let me give you this last thought. How are we perfected? By grace. To be perfected means that we stand before God with no fault. How could that be? The only way that could be is that you look through the eyes of God's grace. Just as perfect as God. How could He say, "Be ye perfect?" Brother Brandon says this, he said, "How could He say, 'Be ye perfect as your Father'?" He said, "The only way that He could say that, He knew He would supply what it would take to make us perfect in the sight of God." And He came, and at the cross, He hung there with His arms stretched out. And notice what He did not cry. He did not cry, "I am finished." He wasn't finished. He said, "It is finished." He settled the sin question forever. Because remember, after Jesus come, this is so powerful, after Jesus come, there never had to be another sacrifice. This man, once and for all, by one offering, has perfected us forever. Do you realize? Do you realize, the first time in history, when man failed, man had to offer animal sacrifices as a substitute. The prophet of God said, and the Scripture teaches, that those brother animals and goats could never take away sin. And every year, once a year, young and poor, they'd bring up a sacrifice. The Scriptures don't say, "God for God," it said, "And there was remembrance made every year for sins." Every time they offered an animal, it would remind God of the fall of what happened in the beginning. And it said, "Every high priest, taken from a mingling man, is ordained for men and things pertaining to God." And so, they offer, stand daily in this temple, offering the same sacrifice, which can never take away sin. But this man offered one sacrifice for sins forever. Notice what it did. Those priests back there stood daily. But when Jesus offered His sacrifice, the Bible said He sat down. You know why? He was not a priest after the order of Aaron. He was a high priest after the order of Melchizedek, which was God Himself. And do you realize, I'm done, but listen, do you realize that when Jesus offered His sacrifice, for the first time in human history, there wasn't a remembrance of sin? God said, "Their sins and their iniquities will I remember no more." The blood of the Lord Jesus Christ had power to wipe out of God's mind. Every sin that was ever committed by us, whether it's past, whether it's present, or whether it's future. Let me say it to you this afternoon, we're not perfect, He is perfect. And through Him, we've been perfected. And each one of you, by faith, can take the blood and accept it by faith. I'm not talking about human works, I'm not talking about you mustering something. I'm saying, you meet God on the grounds of the gospel that He presents to you, and you believe it. I can't even explain how it's done. I just know it's supernatural. And when you believe, now listen, when you believe and you have faith, God will send a sign. And that sign will be a sign to you, that your faith in the finished work of Christ is genuine. And you know what He'll send you? The Holy Ghost. The Holy Ghost will be a sign that God has accepted your faith in the finished work of Calvary. And when God gives you the Holy Ghost, then you can stand and say, "I've never sinned in the first place. It's been wiped out the memories of God. Brother, sister, I believe this, today, standing on the earth, is a bride of Jesus Christ that's washed in the blood of the Lord Jesus Christ. Brother Tom, I don't feel secure because I belong to a messy church. I don't even feel secure by saying, 'I'm in the message.'" That's not, we're finding out, that's not enough. You can't be in it, it's got to be in you. I'm not perfect, He is perfect. And we've been perfected, and we stand today in the sight of God without a sin on us no more. Bow your head just a minute if you would. Heavenly Father, we thank you this afternoon, Lord, for your word. Take this little Father that we express to your people. I see one of the greatest enemies as fighting people is condemnation. But yet, Lord, you made a way where there would be therefore no condemnation to their M, their M, Christ Jesus. Lord, a man and woman today can come by faith and come under the blood of Christ. And that blood, the created blood of Jehovah God, has power to wipe out of God's own mind every sin that's ever been committed. He can take a sinner in a moment's time, make a saint out of him. He can take a drunkard, he can take a prostitute, he can take a drug addict, he can even take a good church member, and in a moment's time, radically change their life, where they stand in the presence of God and the blood, take their sins and splash it, their life, and the bleeds of the blood of the Clorox of Jesus Christ, and there not be a sin against them nowhere. And then, because of that, by boldness, we have access in the presence of God. And we can walk into His presence and talk to Him and walk with Him and come back into fellowship, because in Christ, God and man has been united again. Father, thank you for that, thank you for that truth. May it soak down in the heart of every life today, until they realize, "There is therefore now no condemnation to them who shall lay anything to the charge of God's elect. It is God that justified." Bless your people today, I pray, in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. And the church says, stand with me if you would just a minute. Do y'all know that song, "Grace, grace, God's grace"? Do you know that? Could we sing it together before I turn it back to your pastor? Grace, grace. Oh, just lift your hands to Him now. Say, "Thank you, Lord, for your grace." Thank you, Lord, that you made a way for me. When I didn't know how I could make it, you made a way for me. Oh, grace, grace. Grace, grace. God's grace. Grace that is greater than all our sins. Let's just give the Lord a pop offering. Did you believe that this day? And let me say about grace, if you get what He preached, you won't want to do what's wrong. You might fail, that's that old nature trying to come back, but your nature has been changed. You'll want to please the Lord. When you displease Him, you quickly get back to right. If you, people say, "Well, I don't have a conviction about that, that's animal sacrifice. That somehow works, somehow." The Bible says that the law had a weakness, and that was sin. But this grace we're talking about, He comes into you and begins to live His life through you. Amen, He begins to talk, and you begin to just speak His thoughts. That's what we're after. Amen, I want to, I hope heaven is overcrowded. I think Charlie Kirk said that, that was one of his goals, was to make heaven overcrowded. I want a rapture, that's what I want to be, and I want to be in a rapture, and I know I have to accept that new nature, because I'm not perfect. But I heard the perfect word, and Jesus Christ perfected me because of grace. Amen. Let's remember the key numbers now that we're done. 500, 500, 500 Church Street. And if you put in your GPS, 500 Church Street, you'll get natural food. When you put 150 North Point Road, you got some spiritual food today. But now, we're gonna change the order to 500 Church Street in Sweetwater. And the sisters have been faithfully getting everything ready, I'm sure we'll all enjoy it. I appreciate everybody being here. Brother Valentine, can you dismiss us with a word of prayer? 500 Church Street, and if you can't do that, just follow me, because I always find the food. Brother, come on up, dismiss us, really glad our brother is here. Amen, I did not know I had a brother from the Ivory Coast, but I'm glad to meet him.
Shall we pray? Lord Jesus Christ, we want to thank you and appreciate you for your grace and mercy, Lord, upon our life. Oh, Lord, what a time in your presence, Lord, to hear all those wonderful singing, Lord, to get together, oh Father God, to listen to your word. We thank you for your servant, Brother Luke Gibson, that you have used mightily to speak to our hearts. Lord, we believe that we will never be the same, oh Lord. Father, we thank you for everything you've prayed at, Lord, oh you continue to bless each and every one of us. Bless this church, Brother Tom, and the family in the church here. Lord, we commit everything into your hand, may you continue to bless us. Bless Brother Tony and the wife of Lord, brother, they will, every brother in here. Lord, I pray, and Lord, you bless each and every one of us for the glory and honor of your name. We ask and pray in Jesus' name, amen. God bless you.
And I want to thank our online audience, God bless you, I know you're listening. And we're gonna go eat real food. So, I hope you get, wherever you are online, get some good food tonight. God bless you all, take Jesus with you. This has been wonderful. We'll do it again in January, right, the third Saturday of the month, January the 17th. God bless you all, you're dismissed in Jesus' name. Grace, grace. God's grace. Grace that will pardon and cleanse within. Grace, grace. God's grace. Grace that is greater than all our sin. Oh, grace, grace. God's grace. Grace that will pardon and cleanse within. Grace, grace. God's grace. Grace that is greater than all our sin.